The truth just come to town so that it's done in the that's what he said until he couldn't do nothing because he can't tell us.
On what? Updated? I didn't put anything on it. No, no, because actually the call stopped. So I didn't.
So there's nothing on?
No, he's wrong and and I love him, I love Aaron Hope, but he's getting up there too. He forgets sometimes just when the rest of his office, but that that's completely wrong.
No, I asked him for that. But I can't tell you do what you're on.
No, the thing is, it keeps waiting, so soon as they get that that permit that he got is going to expire. That's what they did before, expired, remember that? Because this is the second round they got. Because it's that condition we use for whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He came before when Mr. Hope was was in there.
Okay.
And he waited and waited with it expired. Jay did.
I don't know if I should have to do it. I'm not saying because when I told him I was going to ask about it, he told me, no, no, no.
All right, everyone, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Town of Spring Hope Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first item we have on our agenda is the Fledge of Allegiance. I ask everybody to can please stand or move your hats and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on my agenda is the amendments to the board meeting from September the third and a special call meeting on September twenty-third. If you've had a chance to read over them, if you might have any items that need to be changed or amended, or would like to make a motion to approve them as written.
I make a motion to approve them as written.
Do I have a session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September third meeting and the special call meeting on September twenty-third. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. That motion passes. The next item I have on my agenda this evening is Rhonda Mills. We'd like to bring an item before the board.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Mills and I am building a home on just a little bit outside of Spring Hope. I fall into the extratutorial area, so I'm allowed to use Spring Hope's water and sewer. It's my understanding that the builder paid the fees and set for the water and sewer to be connected. This would have been early part of August. Let's say the middle, the latter part of August, the work still wasn't done. I made contact with the Town of Spring Hope. She's telling me this should have been done several weeks ago. I informed her that no, it has not been done. She made contact with the, and my understanding again, that this would have been EnviroLink's job, but because of the depth of EnviroLink didn't have the proper insurance to dig that deep, so it had to be contracted to someone else. This is what I was informed of. Somewhere along the line, that didn't get done, that didn't get picked up. So on the end of August, they made contact with the contractor. He stated that he'd come out on September fifth to do the work. Well, as we know, that was the storm. So therefore, the work didn't get done on that Thursday. So I'm thinking naturally Monday, Tuesday, they'll come out and do the work. Never showed, I made contact with Michelle and Sandra. I've been in contact with both of them in relation to getting this job done. Stated, now that was the fifth, here we are, the beginning of the following week. Now he's saying it would be the sixteenth of September. Sixteenth comes, I called Town of Spring Hope. He's had some personal issues. He would not feel to come out on the sixteenth. He came out on the seventeenth. Well, when he comes out on the seventeenth, he hasn't notified eight-one-one. And as a, as this being your line of work, you should know that that should have been done a week or so ago. It can be done up to twelve days prior to service, so there's really no excuse for that not to be done. He states that eight-one-one would not be to come out until Friday. This is Tuesday. I saw eight-one-one on the property the exact same day, so what he was trying to tell me was he couldn't get to the job until Friday. So naturally, the job was completed on that Friday. So you're looking at a two-month or so timeframe of of not getting a job done. Me as a homeowner or the builder, it shouldn't be our responsibility to find out, you know, if the builders paid their fees and instead of, and thinking that it's going to be delegated, the work's going to be delegated out. Someone should be in place to make sure that these things are getting done. I shouldn't have to call nor the builder to find out why work is not being completed two months out. So that's, that's my complaint. So that's putting me behind. Alongside of having other little, you know, anyone that's built a home, you know, there's always something that you run across and unexpected things. But this just set me back a little bit further. That's what I wanted to share.
So I guess this whole process basically started about nine months, which shouldn't typically be that, but it's kind of the perfect storm of multiple different things happening during that time period. One of the delays basically was that, I'm not sure if it falls in the purview of EnviroLink's job, but one of the things that they have always done in the past as far as when it comes to water sewer taps is that, speaking with staff, is that when they had an individual working for them in their staff, Dean, he always got prices quotes and ordered the work to be done and then for the town to be built directly. That didn't happen according to their other staff member who was working with the town as a regional manager, basically saying that he didn't think that it was their job or realized that that was their responsibility. So that was part of the process.
Which was not their job, to install along?
To to coordinate, I guess, basically with the contractor headache is is the subcontractor. So typically EnviroLink, since they couldn't do their work, they would find a subcontract, subcontractor for us to save us cost, the subcontractor would build it directly, but EnviroLink would be the middle, the middleman as far as the coordination. And so basically, after talking to staff, they said that the biggest thing to to make changes in this process would be, instead of using EnviroLink for the quotes and going through, that town staff would directly work with the subcontractor or contact the subcontractor to save time in that process.
So it sounds like here again, we've got an issue with EnviroLink not doing their end of what we thought was their job.
The the norm would have been some, the norm in the past was that EnviroLink did handle those things for us. Whether it was something built into our contract about that, that's yet to be determined. But yes, typically how they've done that is that they did handle that process for us.
Shouldn't have took this long, even with all of these issues here, especially with the contact with the town. It just shouldn't have took this long to get this done. And I don't know what to do other than say, I apologize to this board and I did shit that took this long to get this done.
Well, for the reason why I wanted to come speak is my situation's been resolved. We're moving on to the next phase of the building process. But in the future, someone else coming along, it's just a bad feeling to kind of have your hands tied behind your back. You have no say so. It's nothing you can do but wait. So hopefully with me speaking out, it will help someone else. I don't know what the, what the answer is. I guess that's for you to decide, but I certainly wouldn't want anyone else to go do this. So that's why I'm here this evening.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and certainly apologize for the delay in getting that done. Shouldn't have taken that long. Not acceptable for it taking that long, I agree. Work on it moving forward, hopefully that won't happen again to someone else.
That's, that's, that's why I'm here.
We can't fix a problem if we don't know it exists.
That's right.
So I would recommend too, since you're in the ETJ, that maybe you speak, Mr. Kim, we'd like to have somebody like you involved in some of our committees. Maybe they come in and apologize and help because that's some really good input and we appreciate you looking out for fellow citizens like that. So that, that could really, you could really be, you can take this further if you wanted to, I guess is what I'm saying.
Sounds like a plan. Sounds like a plan. Thank you for having me, Mr. Kim.
Thank you. The next person I have that's requested to speak with the board tonight is Ruby Davis.
Come in and sit and get a change on here. I got it. If I fall down, just call and wait me out. Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I'm sure you know why I'm here. Naturally, you know it involves the cemetery and EnviroLink. Every time I hear that word, my blood pressure goes to two hundred. The town paper last week let everybody know that the flowers at Odell Cemetery would be removed Monday, October the seventh. I went to the flower, to take the flowers off my family graves on Friday, October the fourth around one o'clock. When I arrived, there was no flower on anybody's grave on the entire cemetery. I got so mad, I called EnviroLink, asked the lady what was on the work order for removing the flowers. In a few minutes, she came back and said Monday, October the seventh. I said, well, today is Friday, October the fourth. No flowers in sight. I really wasn't surprised. First, EnviroLink, they don't cut the grass. Now they're taking loved ones' flowers off the graves. I understand EnviroLink also cut other cemeteries. It's time they got their crap together. Does the town hold companies accountable for their work, or do you just assume that they're getting the job done? I assure you, EnviroLink will reimburse me and a few other people that I called. Another issue I have is the business on the corner of Hopkins and Branch Street. The day Jay and I were riding around the town, looking at old rundown, unoccupied houses, I showed him this house. It was a garage and a residential area. Jay said that was against the law. A couple of months later, with nothing being done, I called the chief of police and asked him about the issue. He went on to say, if they have a permit and so on, it was not against the law. So which one of these town officials really know the law? I ask you, if you're interested, to take a look for yourself. It's an old building with a little white picket fence around the corner. Several, I counted nine cars on a Sunday afternoon that was messing around the area. The backyard looks terrible. So I called, well, by the way, let me back up and not repeat myself. That establishment is under surveillance by the Nash County Insurance Department. I have a feeling, I might be wrong, I have a feeling something else is going on there. I don't see how anybody could have nine cars parked outside to be fixed. But anyway, that's been taken care of. The last issue I have are the tires that wore tire and rims. That is a fire hazard. I pointed it out to Jay. Tires are almost back to the street. It seems like the fire chief next door could take care of that. And the other service stations, I pointed out to Jay. When you go, if you want to and will, if you go and look at the tires, they have worn tire, there's hundreds of tires. And now they're backing up to the street within ten or twelve feet. If something were to happen and it would be a fire, Spring Hope would, they would try to think about it for years to come because it would be a big deal. And I pointed that out to Jay. I realize that sales are good now in Spring Hope, house sales, and that's great. But they are buying in Spring Hope and committing to their job elsewhere. They are not shopping in Spring Hope. It's up to you, elected officials, to make this a better town, if you want to. One other issue is my last one. A friend of mine had a graveside service last Monday, and I knew of course what the graveside looked like, grass, all this crap. So I called a man and hired him to cut the grass to make her grave look presentable and nice, which he did. And his comment was, he looked around, he said, you know, this is the sorriest kelp cemetery I have ever seen. That is nothing to be proud of, to hear an outside-town person say that. So it's up to you guys. If need to get on EnviroLink, if you need to hire, I mean, that's, that's y'all's business. But when it comes to taking flowers off people's graves, now that's something else. And I don't approve of it worth, excuse me, worth the crap. So I thank you for your time and for mine. Oh, by the way, for your wasted time and mine. Good night.
Next person I have to address the board is Mr. Philip Mills.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to change the tone a little bit. I'm here this evening to recognize and representation of my church. We received, we just recently celebrated my one hundred and fiftieth church anniversary, one of the oldest churches in Spring Hope. I asked the town for a letter to go in our souvenir booklet. And Mr. Mayor, so I believe did so. And we received a beautiful letter. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for representing this boy. It was well-written and we appreciate it very much. Again, thank you. A couple more issues I want to address. Three fifteen Pine Street. That outfall line needs to be taken a look at. If you will, have someone to take a look at that. And the storm drain to this property, it's stopped up. I put rock in that driveway of that facility a number of times and it, where are my rocks going? It's sand is written. So Friday, I decided that I'm going to go over here and check. We looked at the storm drain, it's completely stopped up. So obviously, when the water rises up, it comes up and goes down beside the street. And wherever it's lowest point, it's washing the driveway out. So I don't know how often the storm drains or check to see if they're unclogged or stopped or what, but I would appreciate that taken, being taken under that, all right? I thank you very much for your time. I hope I didn't use all my three minutes or I can come back next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a budget ordinance amendment, two thousand and twenty-oh-two, regarding insurance and police vehicles and surplus sale.
Again, Michelle provided a copy of the budget ordinance amendment, two thousand and two dash oh-two. And again, this is moving the the line items and appropriations to be changed as follows. A decrease of ninety-four fifty in revenue for, again, the insurance police part line item and then increasing for expenses. Same with the surplus of sales. I believe this was the sales of the body cameras, I guess, that we talked about in the past.
We have a budget amendment ordinance to decrease or relocate ninety-four hundred and fifty dollars from a police car to an expense and sale of surplus. Is there a motion or any discussion for this item?
Make a motion, we accept this budget amendment, two thousand and twenty dash oh-two.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget ordinance amendment, two thousand and twenty-oh-two. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. That motion passes. The next item I have on my agenda is the consideration on the NC eight-one-one, Inc. membership agreement.
And you have a copy of that membership agreement. And again, this is in a way to provide an efficient and affordable way for high standards and service to contractors, utilities and general public for the purpose of requesting locations of varied utilities prior to execution activities. Actually, this is something that's kind of mandated by General Statute eighty-seven dash one-one-five, and I believe it goes all the way to eighty-seven dash one-thirty. If you have any questions.
Do they have any questions? Do I have a motion on this item?
I'm making motion, we accept membership agreement for North Carolina eight-one-one.
And a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to, on the eight-one-one membership agreement. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Next item is the Chamber of Commerce update.
Well, I hope you enjoyed the pumpkin festival. I know I did, and I'm glad you're so proud of it. But I think we had, with the fantastic weather that we had, it made it a very enjoyable experience. I don't know if there's anything that anybody would like to say, if they have any recommendations, but we do have a board meeting that's going to be coming up tomorrow night. So if you do have anything, if you can call the office tomorrow and let us know, I appreciate it. But I think it went off, you know, it's a thing that takes a lot of teamwork, and this year it seemed to really go off without a hitch, any big hitches anyway. The, one thing I would like to announce is I found out Thursday last week that there was a store opening on one oh-eight North Pine Street, the barbin store, and they were opening on Friday. So it's like an appliance store from large appliances to small appliances. And it seems like we're seeing a little influx of new businesses, new, new owners buying stores in Spring Hope, so that's encouraging. So we do look forward to working with those people. And if there's anything that we can do for you guys, let us know. I would also like to remind you that Christmas in Spring Hope, which is not too far down the road, is going to be December, Friday, the thirteenth. So mark that on your calendars. Because it'll be here before you know it. Anybody have any questions?
At this count, you know how many people do we have?
You know, I don't, I'm not a good counter. I don't know about Chief Gant. Maybe you've got a better idea, but I just got the, the feeling that the parade on Saturday was about the same crowd that it was last year, but I don't know how many that is. It was, it was more. I know on Friday, it seemed like it was definitely more. Friday night was definitely more. But again, I'm not a good estimate. I can never, I've never been good at estimating counts, large counts like that, so I don't have a clue.
I would, I would guess you'd call group on Saturday's number at least.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And being here Saturday, there were some people in front of the site seats, which said they were with their new business there. Is the chamber aware of that?
I was just informed of that today, actually. Yes, and they are coming from Rocky Mountain. Seems like most people are coming from the Raleigh vicinity, but they were coming from Rocky Mountain. So, yeah, I had understood that Site Seed Store has been sold, the Antiques, not the antique, but the Auction House on Railroad Street has been sold, and also the old Shell Gas Station has been sold. That's the word on the screen anyway, so.
Tagging, tag the office happens a little while.
Yes, hopefully we'll get in, apparently they're short-staffed at DMV right now, and so we're getting our reports a little bit later. We used to get them around about now for the previous month, but we haven't gotten in last month's totals yet, so. It's, we kind of go up and then down, up and then down, so we're heading in the right direction. I'm hoping that this will be our biggest month yet. We'll see.
Well, we have, we're checking with the lights over on the bypass, right?
I, I need to send Richard Whitaker an email. I don't know, I mean, he's, he told us, took power of it. It was in the works.
Back in April.
I'm sure, I'm sure it probably comes down to four light poles. Apparently it's not a big priority for them. I don't know. But I mean, it's been going on, what? Eight months now?
Well, squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Nine months, yeah.
Ask him again.
Yeah.
See if you have lights at bar next meeting.
You what?
See if you have lights at bar next meeting.
Oh, yeah. That's a goal.
If additional calls are hit, let's know.
Yeah. Would they bother not being additional calls?
To Drew's point, five people called.
Oh, okay.
Anybody have any questions for the chamber? Hang on.
You're welcome.
Next item on my agenda, support for attorney.
The report to be.
Next item would be EnviroLink.
Good evening. A total of one hundred and fifty-nine work orders were completed in September two thousand and nineteen. I have a little summary below. Do you want to see below? Seven hundred and ninety-two bills were generated in September two thousand and nineteen. Well production for the current month is three point three one million gallons with the previous month of four point one three million gallons. With wastewater with the current month of two point four nine million gallons with the previous month of two point three eight million gallons. And then also there's a metered three point two inches of rain this past month. Which I have nothing else to report for here. And I'd like to apologize myself on behalf of EnviroLink about the flower ordeal with both of the cemeteries. It was a misunderstanding in one of our Monday meetings where a couple of our employees took it upon themselves to close out some work orders if they did not understand that there was a work order service date for this Monday, which is no justifiable excuse. But like I said, I'd like to apologize on EnviroLink on my behalf.
Would you be able to reimburse these payments, though?
Yes, sir. And there's already been a couple of people that have called up to Michelle and talked with Ms. Michelle and Ms. Sandra today, and they are reimbursing everybody for whatever they come and claim, if just, just if they take the receipt and turn it into them, they're reimbursed.
Who is the person with EnviroLink that has responsibility over the work that goes on in Spring Hope? You have like a manager that goes around and looks at your different crews doing work? Is there someone inside, is that you?
I myself, for Spring Hope, I try to be the one to manage and go around and view everything and let them know what needs done, which.
So how often do you come to town?
I'm in town, I'm in town daily working. I'm the one that, I'm considered a town resident that does the work orders here in town.
Do you live here in town?
No, sir. I live over in the suburb.
I would ask, and I've asked this of EnviroLink many times, I would ask that you try to be proactive in your maintenance and work on things like the cemetery and the storm drains and driveways and all these things, to try and ride around and just look at things and try to address them before they become a problem so that we don't have complaints, you know?
Yes, sir.
You could go to the cemetery and if you see that you wouldn't want the cemetery, your loved ones were buried in to look like that, then don't wait on a work order from the town. Send your guys over there to cut it. You know, that's why we hired you, because you're supposed to have more resources. you're supposed to have more resources and more people and more availability to do a better job than what we could do to town employees. And in a lot of cases, it doesn't seem like we get that. So, you know.
Yes, sir. I understand.
I mean, I know you feel like you're being bashed tonight. And I'm sorry. But you know, you took this contract home. And we expect you to do what you're required to do and to do a good job of it.
Yes, sir. And I understand that completely. And I would make it, I would make it my own personal point.
You know, any help you can get from Jay, if you need someone to point out some things to you, you know, just think that would be a good thing to do.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I want to go back to Ms. Mills. How deep is her sewer line that y'all can dig it? Because if it's sewer, and that's gravity fed, so if she's towards the end of the line, it's got to be closer to the service.
I'm not sure exactly what went on with the contracting part for the sewer, if it was like sewer and water together, or if it was just each separately. But I know, just from my personal experience, I know that four feet is all they go for contracting. Because like she said, for insurance purposes and whatnot, that's just what their limit has always been. And I know that's what they believe in the contract. The four feet is always the, but I'm not sure. I can find out more information about that contract. And if I can kind of dig and find anything else out about it, I'll come to you or I'll come to Michelle and Sandra and get a little bit better answer. But as far as I know, we just did not contract it out because it was over four feet. But I'm not sure.
It was over four. Do you remember the depth?
I do not.
If you could, and so, don't wait until the next meeting. If you could get it, I'd like to see an email on it, a follow-up on this coming up week.
Yes, sir.
Jake's got all our emails. I'd just like to see a follow-up where we drop the ball. If it's something we need to do, that you need to do, let's get this buried up. Because we don't have a great plan. We're going to need this to happen in the future.
Yes, sir. I agree.
And with everybody that's beating up, I will take a moment to say, you guys did a really good job cleaning up the depth down here.
I do appreciate it.
I know I rode around on Monday, pointed out a few little touch-ups. You guys took care of that. I know Jay and Sandra and Michelle communicated to you. So I appreciate you doing that. But I know we've made this point before, Drew. It's not all about the pumpkin festival. You know, that's what everybody's looking to see.
And that's also my goal was for us not to have to...
It needs to be pumpkin festival 365, as far as you go.
Exactly. And I'm going to work myself, and like I was also saying to you, trying to just get a better grasp on maintaining and edging, edging throughout the years, than edging all at once in the one week period. I mean, getting a better grasp on the cemeteries and everything like that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I want to go back to the cemetery for a minute. How often do y'all cut the cemetery?
As far as I know, their schedule, it's every two weeks that they're in there. But they're actually in form now, where we're trying to fix and do a little bit different of a schedule. Because as of right now, we're doing two, three days here, and then two, three days in another area. Where we're trying to convert that into, we're here for the week, and we're not leaving until it's done. Which I think that's a lot better schedule. And that's what we're going to try to stick to.
It looks better right now than it's looked for a long time. I was out there a day or two after our last meeting, and the cemetery came up. And I had to agree with the lady a while ago. It was sorry. Grass had not been cut. And where it had been cut, they had run down in front of tombstones and left grass between the tombstones. All the grass was over ankle high. Between the tombstones, it was knee high or higher. And I believe we were told for the last meeting that the cemetery had been cut. I personally think that's unacceptable. It got cut sometime before the pumpkin festival. Because I was out there one day last week to check on some grass. But prior to that, looked terrible.
I understand.
And y'all do need to do a better job. And I think our town manager needs to stay a little bit tighter on y'all and double check behind you.
I didn't realize it was Matthews who walked up here. But he did, was a big help with the pumpkin festival. And I understand, this was your first one?
Is it?
Yeah. So had a little bit of a learning curve. He and I both actually had a little bit of a learning curve on Saturday night. So anyway, but yeah, that, very helpful with a lot of things.
I appreciate it.
Whenever I asked, he just went and got it accomplished. So, you know, it was very helpful.
Will you just hear more of that during the year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on our agenda is a report from the police chief.
What's everybody doing tonight? All right. Starting on September 1st, Officer Wilson observed vehicle make a move violation. Former traffic stop, Mr. John Ritsu was charged with car accident reckless driving and resisting an officer. $1,000 secure bond. On September 2nd, the department was dispatched to a possible kidnapping that originated out of Maryland. The welfare check was conducted. The kids were located there, and they were safe. So pretty much what our agency did was just confirm back with Maryland and remove the children out of NCIC as being missing since they were with their mother and safe. We believe it is probably just going to be an ongoing dispute between the separated mother and father. September 8th, Officer Barber and Detective Bell responded to the Spring Hope Park in reference to a fire that had been set in the bathrooms. They do not have any suspect information on that at this time. The case is still open. We have got several tips that have come in. And it's all, pretty much, they're all saying the exact same thing, that right around that same time, there were two younger juvenile black males that left the area. One wearing a red shirt and one wearing a green hoodie. I have contacted some confidential informants that I have in town regarding that. And nobody has any information that they can give. We have actually even offered a reward out of the drug fund for information leading to it. And we still haven't got anything fruitful from it. September 13th, Officer Grawny responded to the LNL road to an intoxicated female. When he approached the female, he observed in plain sight a metal crack pipe sticking out of her pocket. She was charged with drug paraphernalia on the scene and released trespass from the LNL. On September 16th, Officer Barber conducted a vehicle stop for a lane change violation, made contact with Peter Dombrowski, 29 years old out of Whitakers. Dombrowski was intoxicated and charged with driving while impaired. September 21st, Officer Barber and Detective Bell, along with Middlesex PD, were requested by the Nash County Sheriff's Office to assist in a barricaded mental subject at the 3700 block of Brantley Road. They were both on the scene, providing coverage for that residence for about four hours. Contact was made with the subject inside the residence. Non-lethal weapons were used, and the subject was taken into custody and received mental evaluations. On September 23rd, citizen reported a possible overdose in the food line parking lot. Officer Bell arrived on scene, located Ashley Langley, 33-year-old white female out of Elm City. The, she was reported to being seen using heroin in the parking lot, injecting into her right arm. She left the scene. Bell made contact with her. Officer Rafferty and K9 Partner Jackson were on the scene. 10 bags of heroin were located inside the vehicle. She was charged with possession within cell and delivery, also along with maintaining the vehicle for controlled abstinence. The dog did make a positive alert on the heroin thing. September 24th, Officer Wilson assisted Nash County Sheriff's Office with a vehicle pursuit started on 995. This was the, if you saw it on the news, was the vehicle pursuit that led from Wilson to Raleigh that had the kidnapped subject in the back. The vehicle was stolen, and they took the subject into custody with no incident. As far as the pumpkin festival goes, we received zero calls and had zero contacts made with anyone other than normal routine contacts. Nothing dispatched, nothing out of line, no crimes at all reported. Government's Highway Safety Program, Child Safety Seat, was this past month. We charged eight offenses, did several checkpoints, and located three outstanding warrants while we were doing those stops. The training list on the bottom is just something that we battled with the officers and what kind of training that I'm sending them to. If anybody has any questions on that, I can feel free to ask. To touch base with Ms. Ruby, with what she said, I was hoping she would say, so I could give her an answer to our follow-up from her phone call from the Hopkin Street and Nash Street. The, I made contact with everyone at that residence. I've ran VIN numbers and tags on every vehicle at that residence. They are registered to them, or they have title work done to where those vehicles belong to them. There's nothing showing me that there's any type of business being run out of there. I also contacted a lieutenant with DMV license and theft and ran those names, just to see how many vehicle sales have been conducted, to see if they were running used auto sales out of there. And every, they have made some sales in their names, but everyone in the house combined has not reached the individual sale for a dealer, for them to be registered as a dealer. So everything is in compliance. There's absolutely nothing that I have been able to find that is being conducted illegally.
So you might have to say, how many people reside at that place?
I made contact with three. Three adults. There are also some juveniles there, too. I would say, I think it's, they have also a juvenile daughter and son, but non-licensed drivers. So no, they couldn't sell a vehicle if they needed to, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And I mean, I did make mention to them about, you know, keeping the grass cut and stuff like that, which is, you know, not necessarily out of line, but just, you know, trying to keep, the attention was brought to it to me, so I addressed it to them. Made contact with them to remove the vehicles off the side of the road for the parade route. They were immediate, right on it. They took everything. They moved the vehicles into the yard two days prior for the street sweeper to come through, and left them in the yard until the parade was over. They've been great with me the whole time. As far as anything going on illegal there, I was assigned to the Drug Task Force for five years, and I was the first I've heard of it. So I don't know of any suspicious information that would be coming, or suspicious activity that would be involved with the house that were drug-related. I'm not aware of it. I feel like that I would probably be the first to know if there was.
Do I have any questions for the chief this evening?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, I don't know, because there's been some talk of complaints about LNL loitering, that some police officers have said something to the citizens about loitering around there. Is it, no loitering sign? Did that come from the owner, or exactly what is going on?
Well, several months ago, I was approached by a couple of citizens about an officer that had made contact with some subjects that were standing around the parking lot of the gas station. After speaking with that officer, I informed him that there is a sign for loitering. I briefed him on what loitering meant and the general statute for it. And that has been cleared up, and there has not been any incidents since then.
Okay.
And they, every person at the store and all of the officers have been informed that they're not to, not to approach or anything like that for loitering cases unless they're called there by the stores that are requesting the problem, or saying that there is a problem. Unless it's after hours, and they're, they're not doing business, unless it's illegal business.
Is there anything that can be done with the guys that are out there? I'm just sort of bored, hanging out, catcalling the women that are coming to the store?
Well, looking at the loitering statute, it's kind of tough. It's one of the, it's a tough one. Because everyone there has gone in and is spending money at that place. And the management that is there doesn't wish for them to leave. So we can't overstep, we can't act as an agent for that property if the manager that's there is the agent for the property that is saying that it's not a problem. And as far as, you know, somebody talking to women, I mean, catcalling women or men as they're walking in there, I mean, it's not illegal. I mean, it's not polite. But as long as there's no profanity used in front of anyone, you know, it's not a police officer or anything like that, then it's not a crime. So it's not really something I can enforce. I can always go over and show officer presence. But what we have found by going over there and showing officer presence is we get the call that we're not necessarily needed there, because there's not any crimes going on. So it's kind of one of those situations to where we ride through, we make our presence known visually. But as far as intervening with anything, unless we see anything criminal, we're not doing anything with it. Unless we're, you know, obviously, if we're dispatched or called there by the, by the staff. And they do, they call us all the time. If they have issues, the staff at LNL calls us all the time. They've got our officer's numbers, and they have the non-emergency number that the officers carry with them all the time. So, I mean, we get calls by management to go there, just like for the call that I read to you, that they called about the female in the parking lot with the crack pipe in her pocket. If there's something there that they don't like, they call us. So you just kind of, it's not really a whole lot that's going on with that right now.
Do I have any questions for the chief this evening?
I got a question.
Yes.
On brush rate, from what I understand, there's no laws against RVs parking on the street. What about transfer trucks, you know, a rig? I thought there was something for about transfer trucks. I noticed one on, tonight, coming on the way here.
Well, I know that there is stuff in place for parking that in parking lots for businesses. As far as on the streets, it's just not interfering with flow of traffic or repeating traffic. And it's just there for overnight. It's, I believe the way it's worded is long, basically a long time thing. As far as the RV goes, that one that was over there, I made contact with them. And, I mean, it was moved within a couple of days. They just had...
It's back now.
Yeah. But the thing is, is it's maybe something that we could write, or something that we could adopt on it. But it's, as far as anything to enforce with the town of Spring Hope, there's nothing.
I didn't know about transfer trucks. I had heard there wasn't anything like RVs.
It falls under the exact same thing, really, as the RV. The only thing that would, that would hinder it from being is if it was not registered.
Yeah.
That, that is something outside of the town of Spring Hope. But as far as it being registered and having an owner, as long as it's not near long-term, there's, it's not against the law. Unless it's impeding the flow of traffic or a hazard to where it's in an intersection to where you can't see clearly before you go.
I just want to say, my daughter works at LNL, and the officers come by. I mean, she appreciates that. She works the night shift. So it's nice to see them come by. So I just want to kind of piggyback off of that, that they make her feel safe. And as her mother, I'm glad to know that they're out there and around. So I appreciate that.
There's just a fine line between harassment and doing your job. And that's, and I've got to say that I've got a really good group of guys that know that fine line. You know, after a little bit of counseling and talking, getting everybody on the same page, everything, everything's good. I mean, they know when they're needed and know when they're not needed, and what their job is and what their job isn't.
Because I asked the manager also, and she said that she didn't mind him sitting out there.
Right.
I asked her.
Right.
If I ever called you, asking me to call you. If she's going to say it's okay, but then to sit out there and that we're not bothering you.
Right.
So that's why I never called you or Jay.
Well, I think my thing is, is if I've got two men that are sitting on a bench in front of a store, and neither one of them are impaired, what I have right there is two really good witnesses to tell me about something if there is a crime that happens.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the manager's report.
First item, to let the board know that in March 10th through the 12th, Tuesday through Thursday, the 2020 North Carolina Main Street Conference will be held in New Bern, North Carolina. Again, both members of the Board of Commissioners and the Downtown Development Board are invited to attend. Most of the key sessions and seminars and workshops will be held on the second day, on the 11th, on that Wednesday. If any of you all are interested in attending for the, for the conference, please let me know in advance so that I can work on the logistics of registration and for lodging for those who may be staying overnight. Next item I have is the Land Use Plan Update. Andrew and Terrence from the local COG are leading the update process after the departure of Surbas. The planning board, at this point, will be continuing to meet monthly, but they will also have Um, the planning board at this point will be continuing to meet monthly, but they will also have smaller working group meetings that will take place between those, uh, regularly scheduled meetings. Um, again, all of those meetings will be held on, um, Thursdays at six thirty PM. Um, and they will be listed on the town's website, uh, for those interested in attending. And again, they're open to the public, so even with the, the smaller work, work group sessions, um, people from the public are allowed to attend. Uh, and then lastly, the Poplar Street well update, I know that the board had asked, um, to look into this um, for the well that had been shut down at some point in the past. And, um, Kevin Barnell had spoken with Greg Vitale with, uh, Public Water Supply. And after speaking with them, um, he, he spoke with several, um, staff members who may have been familiar with, with this cause it had happened in the past, um, that there were, I guess the well had issues with iron, manganese and, and fecal. Uh, the fecal issue started back in ninety-seven and again, they believe that it might have been leaching from an, um, older outhouse pits that are nearby. Um, the problem continued between ninety-seven to two thousand and then the, the well was temporarily, uh, taken out of service. But officially through their system, through Public Water Supply, it was, uh, never closed out. Um, after speaking with, um, with, with Greg back and forth over the last month or so, uh, PWS is considering allowing for the town to potentially, um, rehab or reactivate that well. There's a lot of, um, contingents, contingencies for that, obviously. Um, but as far as next potential steps or processes, um, surveying would have to be done with, with the lot. And if we can't rehab the exact location of where that existing well is, um, the other recommendation from Kevin from Sox Engineering is to move it within a certain area of, of their current location to still be on that same property, but we would have to start opening up a communication with the property owner as well to, to potentially, um, purchase some of that to, uh, if we're going to place a well out there. So, uh, the other odd thing also is to do other things to investigate the well, which again, um, Kevin had mentioned at the last meeting would be TVing the well, inspecting the well, doing a twenty-four hour drawdown test, checking the casing of the well and, uh, samples as well. But he did suggest that if, um, if the samples do come back, uh, negative or, or bad, um, he's suggesting, suggesting that the town potentially officially abandon the well, um, and, and start considering options on drilling a new one. So, um, at this point, I can, uh, take any lead on what the board would like to do. Uh, maybe talking to Kevin about actual next step costs, um, and exact quotes if you'd like.
I think we need to take a look at that well, cause we're going to need a well. We've had a couple of instances where town got real low.
Can, I guess as Kevin addressed us, because before you pay the survey, I would think you want to make sure the well is okay. And I hate to pay for the survey and then, you know, can he, can we do the drawdown and check the water?
Yeah, so I can ask him about the exact order of that nature and, and emails and follow-up with the board, um, in, in a couple of days.
That's what I think too. Maybe you could get some samples for, see if the, you know, well, the water's bad or whatever, before we move further.
Find out as much as you can for as least money possible before we go any further.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for the manager? I'm going to start on my right on other business with Commissioner Walker.
Another due report.
Commissioner Lucas?
None.
Mr. Griffin?
No, sir.
Mr. Cohn?
No, sir.
Mr. Tucker?
No.
I've got no other business either. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. The move. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. No more discussion. All in favor to say aye. All opposed say no.